Guest.
We've got a lot to do. She's our guest, be our guest, be our guest, be our guest, be our guest.
Hugh's first committee meeting for his third grade class. Look at the hair.
You don't even wonder who he is.
The smile is still the same.
My mom dressed me, it's obvious.
You wear it off your ass every Sunday.
I actually had the same outfit on.
Hugh, I would like to thank you for your counsel and your friendship. I mean, knowing you and having you assist me has been incredible. So I really like to thank you for that. But I wanted everybody to see that this is where it all begins, right here.
First school committee meeting.
Is that first grade or? I don't know, I was gonna say third. The thing is, I know everybody in the picture.
It's amazing here.
I know, but it was, I had it when I needed it.
So here's some good news. Greg is in the same situation, so when you leave, someone's going to be there.
Just call my mom, I'm sure she knows.
So thank you, Hugh.
Yeah, thank you. I think a nice lesson learned is from years of being on the committee is you spend a lot of time considering the school's business and the school's finances and meeting with administrators and everything else. But if you're out there in the school committee, if you're out at a game or a concert or going to things after school or meeting with other parents, you get a really good feel of the schools there. Probably a better feel and a more important feel. So I do think that as a committee member, I think that I was enriched by my experience in the committee with my interactions with the schools and it always made me feel like I was more together with my kids going through the schools. But I also think that one of the reasons I'm leaving the committee is because my kids are graduating and I feel like that constant contact with the schools is super valuable for a committee member. So I'm pleased to see that other parents and others will be coming through. And maybe I'll come back if I have grandkids here some years. But it's always been a joy, I've always loved it and I'll miss it terribly. And I'll probably be involved somehow, I'll be floating around the distance to opine on some subject or other that people have forgotten about. But it is, it's been a wonderful way to stay involved and it's been a wonderful way for me to, you know, at least improve what stability we've given the schools over the years. We're in a much better place than we were. You don't recognize it because you may not have the longitudinal knowledge, but we're a much more stable, solid, put-together school district and I think that's for all our efforts. But, you know, we've shored things up and that's what you can ask for here in the new school district. So I'm pleased with what we've done and I'm hopeful that you guys can carry things forward and do it as ever. And give some more stability to the schools. I'm looking forward to staying at least daily involved because I'll leave the town.
There'll be other sidelines, every football game.
I'll still be covering every football game and I'll still be going to a lot of games, I'm sure, recreationally and concerts and things like that because I certainly enjoy it.
So, can I follow up again with him and then we can?
I'll shut up.
Old people's day.
Yeah, this is old people's day. I'm leaving, I'm the equivalent of leaving the school board with Derek Jeter. So you'll all remember him, but I might go in anonymity and that's just fine. But, you know, I came to this board with the attitude that it's easy to be critical, but it's tough to be, it's hard to be impactful. So I've tried to live that way, it doesn't always appear that way, but it's guidance that I've had on my own, my own, my own attitude. So, my takeaway is that I am extremely grateful for the caring considerations our students have for each other and our administrators and our teachers and our staff have for our students and each other amongst themselves as well. Because this really is a special place. Our, I say it all the time, our administrators and our teachers and our staff know every student in this district. And that is my takeaway that makes the Ipswich School District so special. So that's my takeaway. So I have something else to hand out too because you don't even know.
You prepared.
Nicole has no idea, thank you for being here tonight, Nicole.
Not for you, it's probably for something else, you do realize that, right?
So, everybody, you may or may not know this, but my favorite color is orange. And it's a happy color, Hugh scudded in his basement as well.
My basement is painted.
Tiger orange.
Public safety orange.
Yeah, it's excellent, it's excellent. And so Ipswich is orange and black. Woburn is orange and black, but I worked there, so I couldn't, my mother told me never, never, ever, ever live in the town you work in, so I couldn't move there. Beverly was too big, that's orange and black. Uxbridge was too far away and they have way too many eighth graders on their field hockey team. So it was Ipswich and I'm really happy that, we just moved to town in 1992. So I'm really happy that I came to Ipswich because I came to Ipswich because it was orange and black. But.
So why is it in the bag?
So, 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 I'm sorry Caroline, it's not here today. So this committee, this committee, we don't always agree and I think that's what makes a healthy committee, the debate that we have and then the consensus that we all, we all, we all have at the end. But there's one thing we all agree on.
I'll wear this from the side.
Perfect.
Oh my god, Hugh.
That's a good hat. I wear these hats all the time.
I have nothing in orange.
I can't tell you the swag we have in orange.
I know, but you don't have that, you don't have that. You put that on your head, you'll just disappear in the basement.
It'd be a good idea. Every team that wins anything, we get sweatshirts, t-shirts, all great. I still wear it all.
They're awesome.
There you go.
You definitely.
So if you don't, if you don't wear it at a football game, you can wear it in the woods during hunting season.
This is my new coffee with the school committee when we're out there on a freezing day.
Yeah, so you don't get hit by a car.
This is a town meeting hat right here.
Oh yeah.
So there you go, I love you all, thank you.
All right, I'll say a few words if it's okay. So Chubb, I'll start with you because you just went, so I've known you for a long time, we're neighbors, our kids are the same age. And I feel like sometimes you get a bad rap because you can come off as gruff and you can be accused of being rude, but you always apologize. And I know that you are always coming from a good place and have a big heart and have always had this district and the kids, you know, at top of mind. So I feel like I know the real you and some people don't, this committee does, but sometimes the public, I think, doesn't understand you as well as we do and I know you have a big heart and I appreciate your tolerance.
Thank you.
Hugh, I've learned a lot from you, your encyclopedic knowledge of everything is mind-boggling. And we will miss that, and I, you know, especially your dedication to the budget and athletics in this town. You know, I know that will continue and you'll advocate for both of those things from the sideline, but we will obviously miss your vast knowledge and you're the person we always go to and what's the precedent on that and what's historically happened and so we'll miss those things. So, and thank you for your, many years. And I'm happy that I was able to give you your final year.
Yeah, thank you. That was a good one, would that help me?
That's right.
Well, that's right, man, yeah.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
So you guys are the only, see, I'm gonna cry because I'm the only ones left from when I came and you're leaving me.
You're gonna be the senior member.
That terrifies me. Anyway, I'm like, I have so much to remember.
Next week you get to sit at the front desk.
Dude.
Yep, you do.
I have a lot to remember, no, but anyway, so I just, you guys are just, have been such dedicated members of the school committee and parents and community members and I'm sorry for crying, but you know, that's what I do. And I'll just, I'll miss you guys and you've done so much great stuff for the kids of the schools and you'll be remembered.
Thank you. Thanks Bob. It's funny how it all seems good in retrospect, but having gone head-to-head with people and Ben the spoiler and the guy who likes to throw Molotov cocktails up the wall and other things, I know that it's not always goodness, but I always say what I think anyways.
On that note, I will definitely follow that sentiment. I love this seat and I love this seat for this reason. You guys are individually the ying to my yang so many times and I love it. I love Chubb, we have, I don't know, almost gotten in a fistfight on more than one occasion on public television. And Hugh, you just make people unafraid to have the actual debate and I love that. It's the honesty you guys bring to what you're thinking, what you're feeling, the way you're communicating that kind of, I feel like makes it possible for the rest of us to engage in that kind of public debate, which can be scary and intimidating and certainly was when I started two years ago. And it can be exhausting, but also watching the passion and commitment that you guys both obviously have to every aspect of the school. I mean, you've never seen anybody talk with more joy than when Chubb talks about the boilers in the high school or Hugh talks about the mice out in the field house, athletic field or, you know, and it's just, it's very inspiring to really want to understand and take in as much about this role as a school committee member when you watch people like you do the job. And so thank you for teaching me and fighting with me and schooling me and listening to me and all of those things. And I'm gonna absolutely miss sitting in between you guys, even though my neck is probably gonna very much appreciate knocking my neck in four hours, two hours every other Thursday. So I will miss you guys very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments? So I, you know, I'm looking around the room and we have a quorum of the committee that hired me, so I don't know if that's good or bad. It's good to see former school committee members. Certainly you two leaving are the last two from the original hiring committee and that's always an interesting passage of time for superintendents as the boards change over the years. And knowing that, knowing that the two of you leaving leaves a big hole for us collectively in terms of institutional knowledge is a huge gap that'll need to be filled. So, you know, I wish you well, it's been, it's certainly been a pleasure. You know, Chubb and I had a meeting yesterday morning where we were able to sit and chat and I'm sure you and I will have that opportunity at some point. Certainly been a pleasure working with you both, I've learned a great deal. You've challenged me in a lot of ways to grow as a superintendent and not stop learning. You've helped me to understand the, I'll say, unique characteristics of Ipswich and work through a lot of tough issues over the last five years, so I thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Do we have any citizens' comments?
Nicole, from Jen Pownen, 23 Turkey Shore Road.
Former committee member.
Former school coordinator. I served for six years with Hugh and, I don't know, how many years with you?
Two, maybe.
Two, I think.
Two?
One or two.
One at least, one and a half.
Longer than that. So I just wanted to say a few words, I'll start with you, Chubb. Thank you for stepping up when you did because we were gonna come back really fast, you two filled for that one year and you did and you've been strong yet again and I thank you for your years of service. The district is appreciative of the numerous hours of volunteerism they have given and of course your endeavored, amazing way to work the county. Where people that's constantly really welcome. And Hugh, and two years, Pod, you're gonna get me crying. So, although you're gonna disagree, a few things, like the sale of Little Mac, which I think worked out pretty well for all of us.
I'm just saying.
And I'm not gonna say you were right.
A multi-year-old right, family. Had COVID, you were right on COVID too.
Yep, but I've always respected you for your dedication to Ipswich Public Schools. You rarely, I think, if ever missed a school committee meeting, a daughter's sporting event.
Yeah, I always, yeah.
A physics tutoring session or a house visit to young Ipswich athletes with a sprained, strained or broken foot. Apparently you have a day job too, I'm not sure. But your institutional knowledge of the budgeting process is unparalleled and will be sorely missed as well as your ability to bring the various boards together and contentious issues to numerous people. Your Thursday nights will never be the same, trust me, it's a shock. And so I just want to thank you for your immeasurable dedication to our school system, you've made it so much better.
Thanks. Thank you, Hugh.
Carl Allen Brown Gillett. So I can borrow a page from one of our former members who I remember well who would always preface his comments by saying, "I'll be brief." So I'll try not to do that. I guess a couple of things I was thinking about, I love the comments tonight, but Hugh, for you, a couple of things I was thinking was, one is kind of thanking some of the positive.
Yeah.
I'm probably one of the most positive people I know in the nine years that I was on the committee. Literally, I think I saw you upset one time, angry upset, and you had good reason to do it.
Was I upset?
We'll talk about it afterwards, but I think it was something I was involved in and responsible for, but just always had a positive attitude and I really appreciate that. It rubs off on the rest of the committee. The other thing I really appreciate, it may sound like a minor thing, but it's significant, is you paid attention. Paid attention to the meetings, unless it was game on.
Sometimes. Good at multitasking, really good.
We put up with that, but, and that.
How many is that always?
That led to, you know, insights. You always had, always had interesting insights that we don't think about. A lot of that thing was because you paid attention, you listened to the intent of the conversation. And the last thing I'd say is, and people have touched on this already, is the committee loses the biggest advocate of the schools who become rocks. There's nobody who champions the schools who you do consistently, kids, the staff, teachers, everybody. You know, everybody's a fan, but you express it quite better than most.
I lived it too, don't forget this, this is the full thing, K to 12 and came back from one.
Yeah, there you go.
It's worth it.
Proof in the picture.
It's worth it.
So Chubb, you, I think, bring the same positivity to the committee that you guys, but kind of in a different way. What's that mantra you talk about, it's okay to say?
I like it when it sucks.
I like it when it sucks, right? No matter how much you pile it on, you're gonna keep smiling and you're gonna keep working and you're gonna maintain a positive attitude and that too, I think, is contagious for the committee. The other thing I really appreciated, that people commented on, is not be really, be really direct about what you were thinking and just say it. Some of us would be in a debate thinking about how the words miss something, to say it just right and you just blurt it out, you know, so I was thinking, okay, that's a way to say it, but now it's out there and usually that honesty was helpful to the debate. And the last thing is that I think you were on the committee for what I'll say were all the right bases, which I think was at its core, is that you thought there was something you could help with, contribute to, and do. And so you got on, not for any other reason, so, and maybe true for others, but I know it's true for you. So anyway, I enjoyed nine years with you and five.
Six, six, yes, because the fellow who was, would be brief, I took over his turn.
So, thanks for, and thanks for the time.
Thanks Carl.
Thanks Carl.
Jerry. I'm Jerry Doyle, the finance director, and I didn't realize I could have this opportunity. So it was interesting, today I was speaking with Scott Jewell, teacher, and we were talking about how fortunate we are in Ipswich to have so many community members who volunteer their time and volunteer hours and hours and years and years. And we are so fortunate for, with Chubb and Hugh, two highly intelligent, busy, articulate people willing to do that for our students. And the thing is, we all have our differences and opinions on what's right, but I do know and I trust that the decisions that you always would make would be the best for our students. And as a teacher, you know, in this community, that feels wonderful. There's a certain level of trust that's gonna be always the best for the students and it's the way we think as teachers also, so knowing that this is a team to build score. And then just thank you, I mean, we've done so many things together, Hugh and I went to China together.
We ate some exotic foods, he'll eat anything, love it and love it.
And I also want to thank you, I became a great teacher on the skills of your children, so.
Still doing it. Thanks Hannah, still doing it, appreciate it.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Irene Josephson, 46 Washington Street. Well, first of all, just congratulations, we had a nice meeting. And then I have a question about the, thinking forward about the new school and the listening sessions with the new school, if, how you're gonna reach people that have kids that are already out of school or maybe whose kids aren't in school, so I just wanted to put that out there, you don't have to answer it right now. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, so we're just, to answer that quickly, we're kind of putting a plan together on how to do that. We haven't sort of formulated a full plan on that yet, but it's in the works. We have a subcommittee working on that now.
What would you plan to meet, to reach as many community members as possible and not just parents? Good.
Okay. Sure, and as I give for Hugh and Chubb, we, school committee has.
Got our nameplates.
Got your nameplates.
And your hat.
And your hat.
I got a really old nameplate.
We would like to give you each with an apple tree from Corliss to be delivered. If that works.
That works. Okay, we get it to my wife for Mother's Day? She's watching. No, she's not, I'm sure.
So just to reflect back on your time spent on the school committee and watching you grow.
That's beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have a high school student representative? I'm not done with special acknowledgements. You know, it's, sometimes it's, I have one or two. Good night.
You guys are a great lead, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, good to see you.
Thanks for all of that.
So some weeks I have just one or two, this week I have a number of special acknowledgements. To start with, I'd like to acknowledge Tracy Wagner and Amanda Diaz for their work on orchestrating the STEAM showcase yesterday. It was wonderful to have it in person again. They did a great job putting it together, keeping people somewhat spread out. I think the turnout was pretty good for the first year back, so I just wanted to acknowledge them. I also want to acknowledge Michael Coelho for his work with our students. You may or may not know, the composer that we had in as part of a pain grant, when she was here, she was so impressed with the work of our students and Michael that she asked if we would be willing to record one of her pieces that is going to be used as the standard reference recording for that particular piece of work. So before break, Michael took the students down to Boston to a recording studio and did a recording of this particular piece, so I thought that was pretty cool, you know. Last week was Administrative Professionals Day, a shout out to all of our administrative assistants in the district to keep us all on track. This is Teacher Appreciation Week, so a big thank you to all of our teachers. I know that the school committee provided a nice breakfast earlier in the week at each school. Next week is School Nurses Day. I think it goes without saying that they've been the unsung heroes for the last two-plus years. Our tech 1080 team, there was a, they took that trip to Florida, I think it was? Kansas?
No, it was Florida.
Florida, okay. They ended up with the first place in enterprise events, second place in the remote control racing activities and third place overall out of 30 teams competing.
Awesome.
So, and then finally, the week before school vacation, the middle school held their annual Walk for Hunger. They raised over $18,000 for the open door food pantry, setting a new record. So kudos to all of the students and the staff involved. This year, because it had been postponed the last two years, none of the students had walked before. So this was a brand-new experience for the entire middle school student population, so. And just $18,000, a lot of money to raise, so, so kudos to all of them.
Okay, so we're finding a lot of these traditions that we've had for years, by having this COVID break, it's starting up again, it's quite an awakening. I mean, I was in Maine last night, but.
I mean, this day, I was, I was in Maine last night, but I understand the STEAM showcase is a good example of that, you know? It's, it's like a renaissance.
It is, and Nicole and I were talking about that before the meeting started. I think that the break is, was almost welcome to sort of reimagine some of these activities and rejuvenate them. So, I guess that's what, it's great.
Do we have a report from Caroline, or no?
I did not receive one.
Okay, okay. So we can move on to the overnight field trip request. Mr. Dolan?
Thank you. So, I represent the other music teachers, they're all in the Formia Arts Center rehearsing the musicals. We're requesting our field trip to England, an international trip that we do every four years, a brief history of the trip. This began out of a Fulbright experience I had in 1992, and then in those next few years, we had English groups come here, and then our first trip was 1998, and we've been doing it every four years to England, with the exception of right after 9/11, and we diverted to Canada on that trip. And so our fourth year, 2023, is coming up, and we've been putting plans together and starting to think about this, obviously with COVID and all, if, we're not sure what will happen, it feels like we're heading in the right direction. One of the, you can see in the proposal letter I sent, we use the Encore Tour Company, and we've used them for a number of years, and one of the important parts that they have is they have a really strict COVID protocol also for their travels. If you were to travel with Encore Tours this year, everyone has to be vaccinated, everyone wears masks for any indoor activities or performance activities, and they also have a, if you are isolated, they, they will pay for the isolation in a hotel, and if you are isolated post-travel home, they'll pay for that, including a chaperone to be with students. But the trip is April 13, 2023 to 21st, it's nine days. We leave Thursday evening, right before April vacation, so the students miss one day of school, and then we go until the 21st and we return. The trip presently is proposed as fly into London, go to Bristol, which is an hour and a half, and that's the area that I had been teaching in. And we have, we have a concert in St. Swifton Church, a small little village outside of the city of Bath, and we've been doing that every year that we've gone there. It's a beautiful little village, all the people come out for our performances, it's become a thing over the 20 years, and there are bounties with American flags and British flags that are right across the street, so it's a wonderful community event. We usually raise money at the concert for one of their, their community store or their church, so it's been a great partnership. The next part of the trip would be to Liverpool, and then it would be back to, back to London. John Mitchell would like to go on this trip because he knows it's going to Liverpool, as he said.
Bath, you get to go to Bath?
We will, we will be in Bath, so that, that part of the Bristol Bath, they're right next to each other.
And London too?
And London, good. So, the concert that we have in London is a place that we've performed a number of times also. Last time, the concert was sponsored for a fundraising event for veterans. And what ends up happening, when we do these fundraising type of events, we bring in communities that want to come to the concert, so we have full, you know, a full venue perform for our students, have a packed audience each time, which has been great, and that's one of the nice things about this tour company, they'll assure you that, I have been on tours in the past where we'll go to a cathedral and it will be the, the 40 players in, in the ensemble and the 12 or 15 people in the audience. And this tour company makes sure that we, we have audiences to play. I think you can see from the itinerary, it is busy, it's really important to me, and the tour company takes this seriously, that we are busy every night, no free nights, so that we're always doing something. A number of years ago, there was one night that was free, and, and the tour company, I worked with the manager, and so we all went skating at the local skating rink in Bristol. So they, they're willing to work with whatever we need to do, but it's important, typical day for a student would be get up early, seven thirty, uh, 6:30, 7:00. They have to come to breakfast, they don't have a choice of that, because that's why we check in with all the chaperones, so we check in, it's a great way for us to see how we're doing. How are we doing, how do you feel, who looks really groggy and hasn't slept, and so we can really kind of gauge all of that. And then from there, it's usually sightseeing, rehearsal in the afternoon, and some type of performance in the evening. We'll, we'll have three to four performances on this trip if we go, and we're still looking at possible concert, uh, one other concert. We use, take a school nurse every time this year, if we go on this trip, Jenny Reed is coming along. We always have taken a police officer also, even though they're not there as an official duty, but it helps us a lot, and Brian Reed, Jenny's husband, would go on this one if we go. And, police officers helped us in a number of ways. For instance, you get to the airport with an equipment truck and buses, state police won't let you go to where you need to go, because they don't know who you are, and so, you know, in a, in a truck with equipment, and Brian has worked all of that out on our last trip. And then also there's, he has an awareness, or a policeman has an awareness of what's going on in a crowd, and that's helped us when we're walking through the crowd in middle of London, or we're, you know, we're just gathering people, and it's also a great community building.
Any questions?
Questions? So, all five of my kids have gone on Jerry's trips over the years, I think going back to 2007 or whatever he handled with. They're all amazing and spectacular trips. We're so lucky that COVID kind of fell in the middle, so we didn't really get blown up by COVID for these, for these trips. And Jerry, because of his connections in England and because of the longstanding tradition to the trip, really has a, a wealth of, of practiced group that everyone goes on, and it's very enjoyable for all the kids, it's very productive. The year that they do the England trip, the level of performance is just unbelievable. I know our band is, that consists on great, but every year with the band trip to England, it's always been that much higher level, so it should be really exciting to see, exciting to see how good they are. They usually do a concert before you leave and all that stuff, so those are all amazing, and so, this is one of the key things that makes Ipswich different, and makes us a go-to place for our outstanding music program, and it's a culmination experience for all the kids to go.
So Jerry, with a, with a estimated price tag of $3,400 per student, I know that we've had conversations in the past about expense and, you know, particular, most of our students that are athletes are also involved in some of these programs, so there's the, sort of the double whammy of, of the athletic fees, and now this fee on top of it. Scholarships available, how do, how do we manage those types of things?
We do not have scholarships available, but we do have a fundraiser that has been very successful. The tour company offers a free weekend to either London, Paris, Barcelona, over, can be over two weekends, can be the Veterans Day weekend, so it's a Thursday through Sunday trip, or the Martin Luther King weekend in January. And so we sell raffle tickets, the, the entire expense of the raffle ticket goes directly to the student's account. And we've had students over the years that have raised their entire trip fund, and we've had students who have, haven't done anything with it. So that, that's helped a lot. We, we do have, we register that with the state, and we have to do a percentage that goes to the state as part of us, so if they make, students make, if they sell a dollar, they, five cents goes to the state.
Would you consider maybe doing a FEDD grant that would maybe cover free reduced lunch kids?
We are, we are actually working on one right now, hoping to have that completed by tomorrow. We know that percentage of free and reduced lunch students, and we're suggesting a possible percentage of that.
Seems like a great use of that money. Yeah, I just don't want to, I, I just want to make sure that there are no kids that can't go, because of financial...
We have had some donors step up in the past quietly.
Yep.
Help students, and we try to identify students that will have that need.
It's also why you're doing this, announcing it this early as well, I assume.
Yeah, we feel this is late, but... But yes, we definitely, this, I mean, there's a long plan, you can see, this is possibly for next year, and we have one for every trip of everything we've done, one page of everything in there, and this will be thicker. This trip was 189 people, where we are really questioning how many people we'll have this time, with COVID comfort and families, so...
The band's bigger, isn't it?
Well, the, the numbers are just about the same, you know?
Chubb? So, all the scholarship questions basically have been asked that I had, what did you, what did you raise in those fundraisers, the last fundraiser, do you know?
I think students raised $52,000 on that, I can look it up.
No, that's okay.
I think it's $52,000 that they did, we have raised more in the past also.
That's great.
So, so there, there have been, there have been students who paid their whole trip.
Yep, I understand. Nicole and I are looking forward to our daughter joining you on this trip, so that'll be great, but, so you played, you played painted black at the String Fest.
That's right.
So I assume you're going to do a Beatles tune in Liverpool.
Well, that's, that's, that's not up to me unfortunately, I can suggest it. But we did do, You'll Never Walk Alone, at, in Liverpool last year, which is, you know, the Liverpool football summer.
Yep.
So there were a few, there were people that start, just started singing along, and there were a few boos from the Everton fans.
Great, a motion to support?
That's easy.
That's easy. A second? All right, all in favor? I told my son this was on the agenda, and he said that he'd better approve it.
A little pressure.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you. There's no way you say no, ever. There's no way.
My kids both loved it.
Thanks Jerry.
Actually, we have a longstanding tradition, Barry Hopping voted against every overnight field trip and every overseas field trip.
I forgot about that.
Students say?
All right, so we're moving on to the IDEA policy discussion and vote. Bob, you're up.
So we did a reading of it last meeting, and we're open to input or suggestions, I think if anybody has any, or feedback ready to? And if not, then...
A motion to support?
I have a question.
Yeah.
How do we...
How do we number it?
How do we what?
Letters?
How do we circulate this and implement it and make sure that everyone, all of our teachers have access to it? Going to effect next year?
So we don't have an implementation date, but...
Just circulate it to everyone?
Send it out via email, once it's approved?
And IB should go with it, since it's very much about their creativity and teaching.
It's also a good school committee newsletter.
Yeah? Okay, so we have a motion to support, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? unanimous? Okay, moving on to the superintendent end of year evaluation. I'll just start by giving a quick overview of the process for anyone watching from home. So essentially, we use the framework provided to us by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to, to evaluate our superintendent. And essentially, what Dr. Blake does at the beginning of each year is assign his goals or pick his goals based on four performance standards, four categories, instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture, and he creates his goals based on subsections within each of those standards. Each committee member then rates Dr. Blake on his progress toward meeting each of those standards, and whether or not he's successfully completed that goal, or if he's making significant progress to it, toward it. And there's four categories that, that the committee members are rating him on, unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, and exemplary. Each of those individual evaluations is given to me, I then put together sort of an executive summary, summarizing all of the comments from each committee member. I provide that to Dr. Blake, along with the individual evaluations. And this meeting is essentially designed for, for me as the chair to read the summative evaluation into the record, and then for committee members to ask any questions, make any comments on, on the overall evaluation. So, I'll do that right now, just, I'll read my summative report into the record, and then we can open it up for discussion. Dr. Blake is completing his fifth year of superintendent of the Ipswich Public Schools. His previous two years were exceptionally challenging due to the onset of COVID-19. The 2021-22 school year has been a welcome transition away from the pandemic-related restrictions and back to a more traditional school setting for our students and staff. Unfortunately, our schools face significant hurdles in the aftermath of the pandemic. Learning loss attributed to kids not being in the classroom full-time, along with the increased social emotional needs of our students must be at the forefront of our educational planning going forward. Last fall, Dr. Blake capably guided our district back to full in-person learning, and our district was able to operate without interruption during the school year. Under his leadership, our administrative team and school nurses implemented the necessary protocols to keep our kids safe and in school. Sports and extracurricular activities were reinstated with minimal restrictions, and our kids appreciated the return to traditional school experience. During this time, Dr. Blake was also tasked with integrating two new elementary school principals and a new director of finance. He has shown strong leadership in managing the budget, negotiating contracts with our district's bargaining units, and restarting the discussions around a school project. In addition, his strong relationship with our town manager and other town leaders has had a positive impact on our school district. So now drilling down to the specific goals, student learning goal, instructional leadership, standard 1A curriculum. The goal was to unpack and develop the ELL curriculum and program district-wide in light of new staffing and increasing populations. So, summarizing the comments from the committee members, Dr. Blake chose to focus on the needs of ELL, of English language learner students as his instructional leadership goal this year. An influx of students needing EL support put the achievement of this goal, made the achievement of this goal a challenge. Taking time to understand the EL needs in our schools and gathering resources to support those needs provided the framework necessary to educate these students. It became clear that adding additional staff was required when our EL population increased unexpectedly mid-year. Dr. Blake reacted and was able to bring in additional support to meet this need during a very challenging job market for districts searching for ELL staff. Dr. Blake's community outreach has been an important part of integrating new families into the school community and determining how the schools can help meet the needs of each family. It will be important to keep EL needs of our student population in focus going forward and allocate the resources necessary to meet these needs. Considering the rapid increase of EL students in Ipswich, the school committee would like to hear regular updates on how this new curriculum and program is working. Professional practice goal, management and operations, the goal is to ensure a successful integration of new elementary administrators into the public schools, and the second part is to facilitate the comprehensive district accountability review by the Office of District Reviews and Monitoring. Dr. Blake was faced with the challenge of hiring two new principals and getting them up to speed in a relatively short period of time. To accomplish this goal of a successful integration, Dr. Blake provided them with a seasoned administrator within our district to act as a mentor. By spending time with each principal weekly in their building, Dr. Blake was able to help them transition into their new roles. Attending fries and school council meetings was a good way for Dr. Blake to hear directly from parents and participate in conversations about the happenings in each school. It is important moving forward that Dr. Blake solicits... It is important moving forward that Dr. Blake solicited feedback from stakeholders in each building to gauge how the integration of the new principals has progressed this year. Furthermore, Dr. Blake is encouraged to facilitate further collaboration and cohesiveness between principals and their staff. The second part of this goal was tied to preparing the documentation and site visit required by the Office of District Reviews and Monitoring. Dr. Blake and his staff at the central office provided all the necessary documents and the site visit was completed in early April. The school committee looks forward to reviewing the district review when it's available. Uh, third goal, district improvement, family and community engagement. The goal is to provide opportunities for unifying the elementary school community around the elementary education plan as well as the Vision 2030 documents and facilitate the submission of a new SOI to MSBA in spring of 2022. From the very beginning of the elementary principal selection process, a great deal of focus was put on fostering a cohesive relationship between both elementary schools. The creation of a standard elementary report card and shared math coaching model are examples of the collaboration we were all hoping to see. Regular meetings to ensure the curriculum is aligned between schools and that it ties into our elementary education plan will continue to benefit the district. Dr. Blake's Friday updates were well received and have been an effective communication tool during the pandemic. Going forward, Dr. Blake should continue to work with the school committee to determine how best to reach our school community. Discussions around the location and makeup of our elementary schools will be a major focus over the next year. Dr. Blake should work to increase his engagement with parents and other interested parties. This will go a long way toward unifying our elementary school families around a plan that can move a school project forward. Reviving the Vision 2030 discussion and distributing that plan to the school community should be, should also be a focus for the remainder of 2022. It is encouraging to see the Vision 2030 Subcommittee taking a responsibility of planning for the listening sessions. Communicating to the large, communicating the larger vision for our schools, for our school district should be tied into these sessions. The goal of submitting an SOI in spring of 2022 was not achieved due to the decision by the school committee to push out the SOI until 2023. It was decided that planning for an operational override request at town meeting was a priority. In addition, the decision was made to, in order to fully explore the viability of Biolick Park as a school site, hold listening sessions with the community, and conduct an in-depth demographic study prior to submission of the SOI. Listening sessions should kick off over the summer. The outcome of these sessions, along with the results of the demographic study, will help our district move forward with a plan. District improvement two, professional culture, cultural proficiency. Active, the goals actively lead the DEI Committee established this year within the school district. Dr. Blake chose to include a focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion as part of his goals this year. He led the newly established DEI Committee, which consists of representatives from each building along with five high school students, each with diverse backgrounds. Giving these students an active role in the group is a way to move the work of this committee forward and make it impactful for all students. Dr. Blake took the time to participate in seminars and courses to learn more about how our district can do a better job integrating DEI education into our schools. The school committee looks forward to hearing about the work of the DEI Committee and specifically what this group's goals are for the next year. Updates from the student members of the DEI Committee to the school committee would be especially helpful for all to really see the impact of what's happening in our schools relative to this very important initiative. Dr. Blake received an overall summative performance score of proficient from all committee members. Dr. Blake and his team deserve a great deal of credit for getting our kids through yet another unusual school year as they work through the day-to-day challenges of managing our school district through uncertain times. The Ipswich School Committee is appreciative of Dr. Blake's leadership and we look forward to working with him to continue moving our district forward. Can open it up, the comments from the committee?
Is that in our file anywhere?
It can be.
It can be helpful.
Yeah, I think it'd be nice to have us all have a copy.
So I think your comments are on target. I think Brian did an amazing job with the pandemic. I think he's still doing an amazing job as a superintendent and I'm pleased with everything he's done. I think the goals that he set for himself were challenging this year. All of them were almost impossible to attain perfectly and all of them represented a stretch from what a typical goal might be. So easily achievable goals look good, but they don't accomplish as much. Challenging to achieve goals may not be fully achieved, but they may also move the district forward. So I appreciate that Brian challenged himself with his goals, that the goals were difficult to perfectly achieve and that may put him in the proficient category more. But I do think that realistically, it was appropriate for his time as a superintendent. It was appropriate for the times to select the goals that he set. And I think we appreciate that, you know, you set yourself such challenging and high standards to prepare yourself again. So that, that was all important stuff and I think important things to conquer this year.
Greg? May I go next? I agree. I, I think that was the purpose, I think, of refining the goals as much as we did. We spent three meetings trying to get both the superintendent and the school committee ones correct. Um, I also think that we will see continuations of all of these goals next year. So I think that the progress that would really seem as measurable in some cases, you couldn't do in one year. So I think we're gonna see continuations of a lot of the things that you started and laid the groundwork this year show up again next year.
Thank you. Any other comments, Brian?
The, uh, the elementary school project goal, uh, is one, is, is one of those multi-year goals, for example, and any, uh, any, you know, my comments were that, it was worth, uh, much of the committee's actions that, uh, we didn't get to a SOI this year just because of our decision to go for the override. And so, so I, you know, I can't, can't give any marks on that because we didn't initiate it.
Any other comments for us?
I don't. I, you know, I, I appreciate the summary. I, you know, I will take time to, to review the individual, um, evals and certainly reflect on, on what's in them as I've done in the past. And, you know, it'll play into the goals that I set moving forward. You know, to, to your point, Jeff, you know, some of them, um, will need to continue. They're not, they're not really one-year goals. They're, they're, and I don't know that they're two-year goals. I mean, there are things that I think are gonna need to continue to be on our radar moving forward, so.
I'd like to just comment on the, um, professional practice goal with the integration of the new principals. Um, I, you know, that, that was a tough goal. It's tough, I imagine, to have two new administrators at the same time in both of our elementary schools and, you know, I know that was challenging and, you know, I think it, it seems like a good job was done getting them to, you know, work together and work collaboratively and have a good working relationship, which I think, you know, maybe was not always historically happened. And so I think that was a very good, um, progress, but I think there's more work to be done. And I, I imagine that will work its way into some current goals going forward. Um, in terms of integrating those new positions with their staff, um, and, and community members. And their, you know, those elementary community members, I think, um, there's still work to do in that area of those schools.
Considerable.
Yeah, so I think that, that personally is something I would like to see focused on.
Okay, do we need to, we don't need to approve that or anything?
No.
Okay. All right, so we can move on to, uh, FEFFY's disbursement amount.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can't spend it.
So based on the average market value of the trust with the trailing twelve, it's most recently, twelve quarters. Uh, ending March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, the FEFFY's distribution to the schools will be nine hundred forty-two thousand, two hundred forty-two dollars. Uh, this is comprised of fourteen thousand, nine twenty-five from the remaining portion of the fund and the remaining portion, nine hundred twenty-seven thousand, three seventeen is the pain distribution. So that's a, that's a huge number. Um, you know, we're obviously very.
So typically at this meeting, um, we, we further vote to how, on the split?
Eighty-twenty historically.
Seventy-five, twenty-five. So I, I actually did the math.
Oh, great. So I'll just make a couple of comments. I mean, this.
It ends up being eighty-twenty because you can't spend it.
This has been, um, you know, obviously, these distributions have just been a huge, had a huge impact on the district. And I don't think anyone in two thousand twelve, when this was all settled, could have ever expected that these distributions would get this large.
I did, like we all, I think those of us who were pushing it knew it.
Well, then with the, the corpus continuing to grow to the level that it's at. I mean, the, you know, the corpus started out in the low twenty million range and it's now north of forty-two million. Um, and we've had significant distributions like this over the years, so it's pretty impressive.
And it, it is, you know, when we're, we're talking significant money, the, the, the goal, the notion behind the FEFFY's distribution was to enhance and enrich the educational opportunities and that it's very clear in the paperwork that it can't be used to offset budgetary items um, that would normally be in a, in a school district or school committee budget. And, and so the, the types of things that we're able to do are what puts Ipswich on the map as far as the innovation and the, uh, the, the out-of-the-box thinking that we're able to do in, in our classrooms and, and providing opportunities for our students, you know, for, for place-based learning, for, you know, advanced microscopes and things like that in classrooms and, and re-outfitting science labs and, uh, providing materials that, that the, and experiences that the, the normal school budget can't sustain.
So we talked, I'm sorry, you got to start.
Go ahead.
We discussed last year potentially revisiting the rubric of how this money could be spent. And I don't know if that's a school committee decision or a pain grant committee decision, but we talked about, um, just revisiting that because maybe it hasn't been discussed in a number of years. And so I could, I'd like to see that on a future agenda item or a discussion on our summer retreat.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, it's, go ahead, Jeff.
All right, finish your thought.
No, I, I think, you know, that there is that broad definition of, of enrichment and enhancement. And I would argue that, you know, as the beneficiaries of this trust, it's up to the school committee to guide the traversal weatherall committee and the pain grant committee kind of what the parameters are. So I think it is worthy of discussion.
I've been jotting down notes all year of, you know, things that potentially could be up for discussion to be covered under those.
Do you want to say something? Because I know you, I will, you either rebut me or I will rebut you.
No, no, I was talking a bit about. So first, just a personal anecdote, my daughter took a job with the Phillips Exeter Endowment, which is, that's a high school in southern New Hampshire. They have two and a half billion dollars in their endowment. So forty-two million's good, but it can get bigger and you can do a lot, a lot more good. You know, more margin, more missions. So the more we build that, the more we can do. We should see these monies as potentially transformational for our school district over time. And they really have been. You think about how we handled COVID and all the other things we've done. They've been amazing funds. I also want to, you know, look back at my long career. So when I started, the FEFFY's income was very, very poor. Bob Weatherall had been writing letters to the editor for years about how the Little Neck was not paying their fair share. And they would pay, like, when I was in school, they might pay for a conference that teachers would go to for a thousand dollars every couple of years. So these were very, very paltry sums that the schools got for many years from the FEFFY's of Little Neck. By the time we started, you know, when I really started going in two thousand and three, we were getting a couple hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and at that point, it was from rents and they were fighting us tooth and nail and suing us for overcharging them. Um, so this whole concept of selling the property came forward and it was incredibly controversial. Uh, both Jen and Carl ran against the concept of selling Little Neck. So they fought tooth and nail not to sell it. But, you know, with the stock market and everything else, it turned out to be a wise decision. And it's also allowed people of Little Neck to invest in their homes and greatly increase the value of their homes. And those tax dollars, because those have flowed up, have also helped build the town's coffers. So it's really been a double win for the community. And the amount of money we see is not only flowing from the town taxes, but also obviously from the FEFFY trust and that's been growing all the time. So I think, you know, we, we made the right calls as a committee then, even though it was a controversial one. And I think that when you look back, that was a four-three decision to sell Little Neck. And it was fraught with people yelling at us and angry and never, ever, ever sell land ever for any reason. And land's gone up in value, true, but to make that fungible and actionable, we needed it to be in money. And it's, and it's been a good decision for us. Um, also, when the FEFFY's, uh, before the trust was written, when the FEFFY's were paying, we used that money for busing. We used it for healthcare. It was instituted into our regular budget. We had a budget shortfall before we had our multi-year override. So it features in to one of the reasons why we thought outside the box and ended up doing a multi-year override is because FEFFY's money was vulnerable. And it also feeds into the idea of why we so explicitly wrote for enhancement only. Uh, because it's easy to fall into the trap that how can you enhance your schools when you're cutting a second grade teacher? Or when you don't have enough teachers or kids are in the classroom? Why can't you just pay for teachers that year instead of this or that? And we'll hear that argument over and over again. But one year of an override, one year of regular growth of our budget will suck up that FEFFY's money and put it in the regular budget forever. And so we really have to be really thoughtful about how we rewrite things when we are writing them. But I do think now that we have enough that you can expand what you look at in terms of, of capital to other long-term, uh, plans that involve educators and curriculum changes. And I think that would be, take a great use of those funds. So that's my institutional knowledge and respect.
So my take, actually, Kate, Kate, um, you, you touched on it as well. And, um, I'm looking forward to getting an override passed this term, this time and probably one more after that. These corpuses, I think the financial world is, they, if things are okay, they double every seven years. Is that, is that an axiom that, that used to be one?
Yeah.
Um, so that gives us eighty-four million bucks every year from now. We, uh, we will always have an enhancement enrichment piece, uh, on this, on, on the FEFFY's. I remember George Marcos coming in and saying, "Give us something that we can fundraise for." It came to one of our.
He wants to make it bigger.
Yeah, he wants to, he wanted to double it. Well, thankfully it's been doubled. And it, and it should, and it should double again and then double after that. So we're gonna get to a point where we're gonna have too much enhancement and enrichment money. And it's, you were just saying that you want to keep it out of the budget, but not this override, perhaps not the next. But we have, we have the possibility with these funds to, to have no deficit, no deficits in our school budgets. So.
Nope, don't do that. So keep it out.
Well, I say, when, when, when it gets so large, we need to.
Yep. When it gets so large. I, I knew, I. The difference between three point one percent and four and a half or whatever percent, it's probably six, seven hundred thousand dollars. So every year, all that money could go right into that override and that would be gone. And in one year, that would be part of the regular budget. And so.
Yeah, but it's seven years, we're getting one point five distributions.
Yeah, maybe we hope, but then that difference will also grow.
It'll be a good discussion to overrides for.
Right. Don't need a regular budget. We wrote that very, very, very specific. And I will, and I, and I'm gonna be around, I'll haunt you. Well, well, not regular budget. Grow and enhance.
I would like to see it discussed sooner rather than later. And not only the things we count for enrichment, but also potentially ways that administrator, or administrators, teachers could access the money. Because I don't want it to be the grant process itself to be prohibitive and awkward and, you know. I think there's ways we could think outside the box to, to use this money.
It was starting to adjust the procurement process. I mean, we've done it with the traversal weatherall grants with two, two grants.
Right.
So maybe, maybe if that works, and I think it is, maybe it's time to think about that on the other, the other grant, pain grants.
I think it's a good topic.
You can do multi-year capital funding. You can do multi-year pilot programs. There's all sorts of good stuff.
But we've had an excellent town manager who's been very good with us with capital from, from our last experience as well. It's been a good collaboration.
So the FEFFY's are presenting to the finance committee at, I believe, the week after town meeting, their, their next meeting. Um, so I'll, I'll attend that. I'm curious to see how their performance has been. Specifically how their allocation has held up in a pretty volatile market this year. So I can give a quick report during this meeting about that. Um, so we need to vote on the split. We've traditionally done seventy-five, twenty-five, seventy-five percent to the pain enhancement grants uh, and twenty-five percent to the traversal weatherall innovation grants. Seventy-five percent represents six hundred ninety-five thousand, four hundred eighty-seven dollars, seventy-five cents. And twenty-five percent represents two hundred thirty-one thousand. And twenty-five percent represents two hundred thirty-one thousand, eight twenty-nine, twenty-five. So can I get a motion to approve that split?
Some of.
Second?
Discussion. We've not spent it in the, in the Weatherall traversal grants pretty much in the last four or five years. Do we anticipate that more will be spent? Or should we shift to an eighty-twenty? I love the traversal Weatherall grants. I think they're the let a thousand flowers bloom kind of thing. It's like nice to have little ideas popping up. But if we're not going to spend it, I don't know if it, it helps to defer the decision being done.
We've, we've, we've raised the limits on which, on which you can, you can ask for the grants, the grants for larger. We, we, we've only had a COVID experience in which that has happened. So I'd like to hold that off.
Hold that seventy.
We can always redistribute it.
I was just going to say, we could, the, the school committee has the ability to revisit and, and reallocate.
We've done that in.
Come down.
So if it's not being spent and there's a need in a, in a paying grant, then we can revisit that.
Fall in favor? Okay. Uh, let's see. End of your update, Dr. Blake?
Yes, so we're quickly coming toward the end of the school year, although it's early May. This next month is going to fly by, so I just want to throw out some highlights of things coming up. Folks want to take some notes on these, fine, but they'll be in the calendars. So I'll start with May eighteenth is the high school spring choral concert. May twenty-third is the high school spring art show. June sixth, and these are all general events. June sixth is the high school pops concert for the symphony orchestra. June ninth is the middle school spring choral concert. June fourteenth is the middle school instrumental concert. June sixteenth is Crane Beach Day, with the seventeenth being the rain date for that. And June twenty-first is the last day of school. In terms of high school and senior activities specifically, their final exams are the week of the, of May twenty-third. Senior prom is May twenty-sixth. It's going to be held at Castle Hill. It'll be from seven till ten. The prominade will begin at six fifteen for parents.
I'll be there, even though I'm not on the committee.
As will I. And then, senior week activities are the week of May thirty-first, with graduation being on Sunday, June fifth. It is scheduled for ten AM in the stadium, outside, weather permitting. If we can't pull that off, graduation will be moved indoors at the same time. And gates will open for parents at nine o'clock.
Are you going to do the car parade?
For graduation?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think so because we're in the.
There was discussion at the high school council meeting last week that students, I think, with Wendy White are trying to pull something together.
Okay.
Potentially before baccalaureate.
Because that was awesome.
When is baccalaureate?
I think it's Friday or Thursday, it's June first.
Do you think it's on a Wednesday?
That's seven.
I'm sorry. Yep. I missed, I don't have that either. Baccalaureate is Wednesday, June first, seven o'clock. In the Performing Arts Center.
Ah, that'd be great.
I'm sorry.
Parade through town?
Yay, TBD.
Okay.
The parade's going to be not on graduation.
That's not on my sheet.
It, it's still being worked out with the students.
You wouldn't really do it Sunday morning?
There was discussion about it. It, it was, there was questions of funneling enough cars into this parking lot and.
Sounds chaotic.
Yeah, it's probably more of a, an issue and probably better served. Yeah.
Yes.
So while, while we're talking about students and parade social, excellent. I'm sorry, it's not Crane Beach. I understand why because it's, it's actually very expensive. It rained last time.
Yeah.
Last year. But, but just as another aside, I don't know if all of you know that there's an Instagram page where all these seniors are going to college or get, or where they choose to go to college? It's phenomenal.
They're hell of a crowd everywhere.
Yeah.
Lately, it's been going crazy because May first is the decision day.
Yeah, yeah. And so if you don't, if you haven't seen it, if you've, if you're on that platform, it's really good. So.
Like I suggest future plans.
Yeah.
Something. What of these events do the school committee members traditionally?
Yes. As in all of them.
Junior prom, junior prom, senior prom.
Yeah.
Only a couple people are each of those.
Yeah. I mean, concerts, if you can get to them, they're just are wonderful.
Baccalaureate is awesome.
Right.
Awesome.
Yep.
Yeah, so I think we'll, we'll be the next meeting.
Yeah, we can, we can decide. Yep.
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 You find it?
Yep.
Okay.
It's really good.
Anything else in your update?
Uh, no, that's, that's.
All right, so we'll move on to override discussion. Kate, you just, you want to give an update on the workings of the steering committee and kind of telling there?
Sure. So.
I feel like I need my gavel.
I don't know what to do.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, is there a gavel?
More today, I'm gone.
Now the gavel's been gone for years.
So.
I was afraid to give you a hammer, okay?
So override committee continues to meet weekly. Loan signs are out. Mailer was distributed to every household. Yes, I got mine yesterday, today or tomorrow. We should get it.
Get some? Get yours here?
I didn't get mine.
We got much?
Um, we're sign holding starting this weekend, next weekend. There's some school pickup and drop-off dates as well. I'm happy to circulate that. Maybe you need some help. We have two, they're also trying to raise some speakers for town meeting. Supportive speakers, so if anyone has ideas for that. Yeah, thanks for moving along. We have three letters, there were three letters to the editor in the paper this week. Couple more next week, I believe. Yeah, thanks for moving along. I'd like to spend some time discussing our town meeting. Overdue in the downtown.
Okay, sure. So one quick update too on the warrant. It turns out there's a, a couple of errors, one specifically on Article twelve, which is the override article. It mentions it requires a two-thirds vote, which is not correct. It's actually a simple majority for the override to pass. Tony Marino made us aware of that on our chair's call last week. I talked with Tom Murphy this morning and he confirmed that that was indeed the case. It's a simple majority. I've looked back on the warrants for the last two overrides and they were both, they both mentioned simple majority was not two-thirds. So Tom Murphy will make it very clear prior to the vote that it's a simple majority and not a two-thirds. So I think there were two other articles that had that same error on them. Do you want to?
Sign holding. I'm signed up for Saturday morning. How, I always hold signs with you.
This weekend. I'll be there both days next weekend.
No, no problem. No, I'm not saying come with me, but it's always good, you know, I love holding signs.
I'll be there a bunch.
With you. And it would be great to get every single community, uh, school committee member holding signs at some point.
I don't.
As private citizens.
And what is the position of the school committee on students and/or staff members holding signs?
As private citizens?
They are welcome to hold signs as private citizens on their own time.
Okay.
Yeah, love to see them.
Okay.
And not on school grounds.
Yep.
Don't send the staff downtown during the school day.
Frowned upon that.
And students are welcome, you know.
We're students in the middle of the school day.
We're not pressuring anyone, but.
There's a, well, I, I, I just.
Well, we're not pressuring students. And they are welcome. I'm going to, um, I've been in touch with a couple of seniors, um, seniors. I'm hoping to get them.
Good, beautiful.
Hit the off as well.
Yep.
Because they get out of the effort in that younger age group.
Good.
And I'm in, I'm delicately including information about the override coming up in my weekly messaging without being political, which I need to stay neutral, otherwise I get myself in hot water. I do that enough.
You're also doing a, a letter in this week that starts Sunday's middle.
I have written a letter and we just want to make sure that it's, that the letter itself is also clean so that there's no no issues.
And Hugh is presenting a town meeting?
Yep.
With slides or?
Don't have any slides yet.
Just one slide.
I may wear that sweater.
That's all you need.
Do we plan to have other speakers on the meeting?
I, I, I am ready to, I'm going to write something down. And then I'm going to send it to our chair for, and maybe I should see CQ.
Yeah.
For, for approval. But I think we need to, for example, if we have twelve in opposition, we, we're, the committee is hopeful to have at least three, three strong advocates speak in favor of the override. From, from the, those in favor, microphones. But I think we should be ready to backstop and be ready to rebut. And having other people besides just Hugh might be helpful.
Yeah, I mean, we'll have all the.
And I'll prepare something and get it to you before.
We, we could pull whatever data we need, a little bit of everything, have all the data ready to go to rebut any claims from them. You know, from the opposing side. So I think we'll be okay with that. But I think it's, you know, it's most important to get a number of folks lined up from the floor to get up there and talk. We need to get, we need to get those guys ready to go.
And last one week.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we've got, you know, we've got our steering committee, which have done great work.
Beautiful work.
They would be more than happy to volunteer to do it.
Yep.
Yeah. And we have some potential, a lot of people volunteer to write letters to the editor, but then have to fruition. So we're now asking some of those people if they're willing to speak into it.
Great.
Okay. Anything else? All right, let's move on to the.
Speaking of town meeting, let me just throw this out there. I have arranged for babysitting at town meeting, so that'll be going out in our, in my messaging as well. So that we have, I think we have seven or eight students who will be available for, to do, they'll be doing community service.
Could you inform me about information?
Yes, yep.
It's a good part of it.
My eighteen-year-old daughter could vote, it's like, oh, I'm excited to go babysit. You gotta vote. No, 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 no. She's got to vote. You can vote.
We're getting soft words today.
We need the voters.
Yes, so I'll get that out so that we have.
Kids will be so cute.
We get it on social media.
Yeah.
After.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. Who's doing the social media account for, is that Andy?
What's her, Dillinger? Dillingham.
Dillingham. My name is Zia.
She's good.
She's doing a great job.
She's doing a great job. It's a phenomenal committee.
All right, so we'll move on to Dr. Blake's administrative report.
Yep, so I will start with the COVID numbers unfortunately still. So it's been a month since my last report, so we've had eighty-one cases in the schools since the beginning of April. So that covered the two-week period. Two weeks for break and then, you know, the time since our last meeting. We did identify two clusters that had a significant number, like upwards of ten students in each one of them. One was the bel canto choir trip. All the kids rode the bus together, were singing together, and we had a, a big pop of cases out of that. And the second was the sixth grade ecology trip that just happened. We had, I think, twelve students there and then some stragglers come in after that. But all, all in the sixth grade. So there were two significant clusters. And, and the rest were spread out between the, the four schools and, and staff, mainly, mainly students, but a number of staff members as well. We continue to test weekly as part of the testing program that did get extended by the commissioner and the state. We're finding that of the cases that are testing positive, with the, the more recent strains, they're, they're much more mild cases in terms of symptomatology. So we're, we're thankful for that, but certainly still continuing to follow the protocols, et cetera. We still have a number of students and staff that are willingly, you know, by their own choice, wearing masks in school. And so we certainly support that. Although it's been a month since my, my last report, you know, one week was school vacation and I was out for vacation a different week. We, we did have the DESI onsite before school vacation. They came in, they were here for four days that week, either in person or virtually. I thought it was going to be a much bigger group of people that came through. They sent one observer to each elementary school and I think two observers to the middle school and to the high school. When they came in to do their observations, they came in and, and essentially just had a rubric and they were in, looking for certain things. We did have the rubric ahead of time, so we knew what they were going to be rating us on. They have given us a preliminary report on that piece of it, just the classroom observations. And so the leadership team is looking at that. Some of the things that they were looking at were the emotional support domain, you know, positive or negative climate in the classroom, the teacher sensitivity, regard for student perspectives, the classroom, the organization of the classroom, behavior management, productivity, et cetera. And then instructional support around concept development. And they were mainly looking at our, our English language arts and our math classes. So it wasn't, they weren't visiting all of the classrooms in the school. And then they were also looking at student engagement. So the, the preliminary results that we're seeing are, are, are positive. You know, certainly there's, there's going to be some room for, for growth and, and great discussions around it. When we, when we start digging in, the leadership team just started looking at it this past Tuesday. So we'll have a, a more comprehensive report out on, on only that piece. But we won't see the final report on the entire onsite until probably late June. As they, they write it, AIR writes the report, submits it to DESI for, for their approval. So the other piece, so the, so the classroom observation was one piece. As I reported out before, we, district-wide, had to organize and in some cases, format upwards of four hundred documents that were eventually uploaded to the AIR, AIR website for their review. Everything from daily class schedules and building maps to our supervision and evaluation system. Course syllabi, you name it, they wanted to see it. And so we uploaded those documents ahead of time. When they came in, they did a number of different interviews and focus groups. They interviewed me individually. They interviewed finance office and HR. They interviewed Tracy around curriculum, instruction and assessment. They did focus groups in each of the schools. They did a focus group with teachers. And then they did a separate focus group with specialists. I know some of the school committee members were involved in a focus group as well. I think there was a parent focus group that was done.
Students.
And, and the student groups at, at the middle and high school. So they, they covered a wide swath of, of folks throughout the district. You know, asking and, and, you know, about particular things in, in terms of student and staff experiences to, you know, curriculum, instruction and assessment, how we manage budgets, how we. develop budgets, things like that. The relationship between the superintendent and the school committee. So they, they, they covered a wide range of, of topics in the four days. So the feedback, our feedback to them was that they were not the least bit intrusive. The teachers all reported that, you know, when they came in for the observations, they didn't, they didn't want to engage with the teachers. There were a couple of opportunities where, where teachers wanted to get the kids and get the, the observers involved and they, they were there, they were very focused with their checklists and off they went to the next classroom. So, but they, the, the visiting team felt very positive about their visit here when they left and, and our feedback was the same. They were not intrusive at all. We thought it was a positive experience. See how that, see how the final report comes out and, and, you know, as I said earlier, you know, it's certainly going to give us an opportunity to, to step back and, and see where we, where we stand as a district, having never gone through this process before. So I'm looking forward to the final report. Other things over the last month, you know, the, the normal monthly updates that I, I do, monthly meetings that I do with athletics, technology and facilities. Crest Board had, Board of Directors had their meeting, uh, final meeting to approve their budget, dealing with some personnel issues. And so I've had numerous meetings regarding that. I met with the FEF, with a couple of FEFIs representatives to discuss some, some potential project funding outside of the, the FEF, the pain grants and the, and the annual distribution. So just having, you know, planting some seeds and seeing what, what might be possible there in, in terms of enhancement. We also had the geothermal study done for the, the heating system here at the high school. That, and that report has come in. We just met with the folks that, that produced the report the other day and there'll be more work coming out around that.
Could you distribute that report to us?
Certainly. I have, I have one, right now I have one copy, as I said, it just came out, but yeah, yeah. And then I'm, I, I was contacted by, you know, folks know that I've been involved with the Boy Scouts for, since, since I was a boy. And they're doing a lot of work with FEMA now around emergency preparedness. And so they have a program that they've contacted me about and, and John Hubbard and I, John Hubbard is the lieutenant here in town and the emergency management director. And so we're starting to, to have some conversations with FEMA and some of the work that, that the scouts are doing around emergency preparedness. So there'll be more to come on that. And then obviously last night was the, the STEAM showcase, which was, was phenomenal. So fasten your seatbelt. The next month and a half is.
It's gonna fly.
It's gonna fly and it's, it's.
A lot.
Straight out, it's a lot. It's drinking from the fire hose for the next two months.
Comments or questions for Brian? All right. Move on to subcommittee working group and liaison reports. Let's see, athletics, we have not met. We have a meeting next week, the 11th. Budget has not met. Communications, we're meeting and it won't yet.
Twenty-four. We bumped it. Yeah. So I'm thinking we're aiming for communications for the final newsletter at the school year to go out maybe June 3rd.
Mutual concerns?
Last, last meeting was canceled and it hasn't been rescheduled.
They're waiting.
Negotiations, we have some meetings coming up.
We do, we have custodian negotiations scheduled for, uh, for Monday, the 9th at three. And then, and then the 19th, uh, the 19th is scheduled for the teaching assistants, TAs.
That's our first negotiations meeting with that.
With that group, right?
Okay.
Yep.
Operations?
We're gonna have to schedule a meeting to onboard the two new members as soon as possible after their election. And Greg, since Chubb is stepping off and you've been around next longest, I was hoping you'd join me and Jeff at least for this first meeting.
Sure.
Just to kind of.
Yep.
Get them onboard.
And then the other piece to that too is when operations met the last time, we talked about looking at some other, other models or other ways that other superintendents are being evaluated. And so I started collecting some other.
Okay.
Models and goals.
Policy?
Have not met.
Nothing.
Did we finish voting on the rest of the? We did?
I think we're done.
Last meeting, didn't we? You read in, we did, we held yours back, we held the, the one you read in back.
There are few left in group I.
That's what, I think we still have some stragglers.
Some stragglers.
Yeah. There are some.
Uh, working group, race and equity? You guys met?
We did.
Yep.
God, that was a long time ago. Or maybe it was last week, I really don't know. We did meet, and I think I reported back at our last meeting.
Okay.
We sort of.
Yep.
Aren't going to be requesting to keep the group going. There was some discussion about transitioning a liaison position to the school district just to see if there's something that comes out of that that we could support better. Maybe that would be a better situation, but that's something we can discuss at workshop this summer.
Facilities? Vision 20.
We do, we do need a facilities working group discussion because if we're gonna start talking about listening sessions, we're gonna need some, need to have some discussion about that. And I also need to have a discussion about some of the concerns that Tony and Chris Race have raised about the roofs at the two elementary schools.
Okay.
And the Winthrop roof in particular needing, needing to be something having, needing to be done with it because it's, you know, it's, it's an insurance issue.
I'm happy to jump on in place of Chubb on that committee too, unless someone else wants to volunteer. Okay, so we can schedule that soon. Vision 2030?
We just met. It was a very good meeting, very productive. Brian, it's, we're sort of retooling the whole thing. In light of COVID, COVID's changed so much, it doesn't make sense to sort of push ahead of the pre-COVID vision and plan, plus with the assessment that just took place. I think that's gonna really guide a lot of what comes out of it. Brian laid out extremely thoughtful, extremely comprehensive goals for the district, which Pab and I really liked listening, um, listening to them. And then we discussed a couple tweaks, a couple additions to those goals. I don't think they're ready for public consumption yet, but they're just an incredible start and a really, really positive direction for the district. And again, just the comprehensive nature of them was really just outstanding. So that conversation was really excellent. It is a working group. We're gonna obviously ask to keep going next year. And then we did discuss the listening sessions and what we would like to see, because we're sort of considering, this is part of Vision 2030, is we have requested two, two subcommittees. And one would be, we'd like to see a graphic created by communications that outlines, we need facilities to reach out to Bill Loge. Loge?
Loge, yep.
Loge. Um, and get dates for a listening session to start in the summer, two in the summer and at least two more in the fall. Different times, different locations to meet the different community groups. One being over Zoom to reach those people who either can't get out of their homes very easily or, you know, work, childcare issues. But we really like a graphic created by communications with that information to go out in the next final newsletter so we really can get ahead of sort of the media relations campaign that we need to do with the town in terms of getting this on people's calendar. And they know, okay, even if we're away, we can do this Zoom one or there's one in the fall, make sure we can go to.
So the graphic around the timing.
We'd like to see something. We're suggesting, um, something that lists the dates, four dates, four times, four locations. Hopefully. Something that can go on social media, something that can go into the newsletter, something that can go into the paper, something that can go.
On the fridge.
Not just in the weeklies, but also in paper to every student home. So it can go on the fridge. Like we really want to do broad outreach, again, with a lot of lead time, even though most of this won't happen towards the end of the summer, but people can really plan for it. So that's our ask.
Is two in the summer and two in the fall too late?
We're trying to hit, our thought process was the summer ones wouldn't be too late, but trying to hit as many different, it's, it's just hard timing coming into the summer. So trying to hit as many different groups.
And we, we tend to take the entire summer off from a lot of activity, but it's not like everybody's pulling up the sidewalks and leaving town for the summer.
Right.
So we can, we can still do some of those listening sessions and, and move some of that work forward in, in different venues and, you know, under a different energy level.
Three into the summer and then one in September, but just really nail down those dates, get that information pushed out in as many different ways as we possibly can to really pull the community in to this.
I think that was one of the reasons Emily was saying is we're hoping to get it out as soon as possible so that people, even if, as they are making plans for the summer, can see, okay, well, I can make this one.
Right. Or there is one in the fall, I don't have to worry about it, but, because I have no childcare all summer, but I can hit that one or two, you know, one or.
So the Vision 2030 group would come up with those dates?
No, facilities needs to reach out to Bill to find out his availability, if he's going to be moderating these, which I think we'd all decided was the way to go.
Yes.
And so find out his availability soon for, which is why also I think we need a little bit of lead time. And then give that to communications and then get that out.
We would need that in the notes. We could, for district, we think it's by the end of the year.
Yeah, if you want to do it, I mean, I don't know if you'd want to push the letter, newsletter out to June 10th instead of the 3rd, just to firm up that piece, but that's, that was our hope, was that it would get out before the end of the year.
Yeah, I think we have plenty of time. Okay. Have any working groups, sorry, any liaison groups met? Liaisons met, I should say? I just, I was on the IAF call last week. They're, you know, it's a pretty impressive group. They're up and running, they're fundraising, they're sort of nailing down their final branding, their marketing piece. And as I said, they're, they're, they're a great group and I think they're, they're continue to be a huge asset to our district in terms of some of the grants that they're giving to, you know, our strings, our athletics, just music department as a whole, Green Team. So it's, it's, it's good, it's good to sit on those calls and kind of hear what's going on. They're, they're, they're pretty excited to now finally be at the point where they're really kind of off and running after, you know, quite a bit of time of kind of reconfiguring the group and getting their messaging right after the previous group that was in there. So that's all I had.
Sorry, I have a little question. When do we re-distribute people on all these committees and, and have the discussions about? Do we, do we need all the liaison positions?
We reassign the subcommittees and the liaison groups and the working groups at our summer meeting. But we will reassign subcommittee assignments when our new members are sworn in in their first meeting.
So in the past, the chair has asked interest in certain subcommittees.
Does anybody have interest in certain subcommittees?
There's gonna be an opening on budget.
There's gonna be three openings on budget.
I would say, I would say send me, if, if you're interested in, in, in joining a specific subcommittee or being a liaison or a member of a working group.
Shouldn't we wait for our new members to have this conversation?
No, get in there now. Okay.
No, because if we do, are opening it up, I mean, to reshuffle the decks a little bit.
Yeah, just, you know.
You do have some, some committees that should probably take some veterans, frankly?
Budget.
Negotiations, this is, this is a good example.
Me, perhaps, budget as well, so.
Yep. Yeah, we, we'll, we'll work on that.
Well, you need immediate, I mean, you're gonna have a negotiations meeting.
So we have, we, we, I, I have someone in mind I'd like to ask, but I'd rather not put that person on the spot.
Aye aye.
We may have that taken care of.
I'm sure you do.
If not, you can join us on Monday.
Oh, is it Monday?
Yeah. Okay, so we'll move on to new business.
Actually, I'm still on the committee on Monday.
About some bills, we all sit there. You should join us.
Great work.
Great work.
Consent agenda. I move that the Ipswich School Committee accept the following. A $2,000 donation from New England Bio Labs for the Sustainability Club to be used towards the electric car charging station to be deposited to the high school gift account. And a $4,000 donation from the Ipswich Education Foundation for the racing team's trip to Florida to be deposited into the high school gift account.
Move to accept.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
What about you?
Oh, yeah.
So moved, that's fine. Chubb?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, Ipswich.
Congratulations, guys.
Yeah.